And we will get started. The first item on our agenda this morning is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Um, well, the only item we have under instruction today is item number 3.01, state designations update. Uh, just so everybody understands, uh, if you didn't notice, Mr. McCoy is not with us today. His grandmother passed over the weekend, uh, which would have asked Dr. McDavid to take over for him. Dr. McDavid is ill. So Tara is shoot, uh, Tara Dean drew the short end of the stick and she's now run out of the room screaming. So, oh, she is, oh, there you are. Okay. So Tara, Dr. Royster, do you have any comments before she starts?
Simply that, uh, we want to present this information to you. Uh, as background, you see schools with state designations. Our best to explain to you what those designation mean. Now, we had intended to present this far earlier, but the designators changed multiple times during the course of this school year. This is now, we believe, the final definition, all right Tara?
Yes, yes.
On the study, they had to provide multiple previous definitions as to how schools were determined to be designated with certain statuses. And, um, so we'll present that to you. Certainly any questions that you have at the end, be glad to try to answer. It is to a degree complex and confusing, which I think does not help the general public to understand where exactly their school stands in their performance. And it is not easy to communicate to people in the community what these designations mean. But we will certainly do our best to present that information. I know you all are to a degree familiar with it. But it's some, it's changed each year we've had these designations. So keeping up with it is a full-time job for the people for whom it is a full-time job. Hopefully this will bring some clarity to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So thank you for having me today to talk about state designations update. As Dr. Royster said, we thought we would have had this information in December. Um, it, we got it in January and then there were some corrections that had to be made in February. So I would, the first thing I want you to remember is that when, um, high schools are, their designations are based on the, um, a cohort of students, we call that their GR9. And so our report card, the designations for high schools was based on the 2022 report card, but test scores from these seniors when they were, um, started ninth grade in 2019. So when you look at the high school designation, that is a cohort GR22. And the test scores dated back to, for English one, algebra one, and the majority of our students take biology one would have been in 2019. Recall in 2020, our students did not take state testing. And then in 2021, those students would have been juniors, majority of them took US history. And then in 2022, they were seniors. So that is different than how you would see three, um, elementary and middle school, um, designation. So that is important to know before we get to our designations. So the state designation numbers of all designations, there are CSI schools, which there were 59 in the state that were designated as CSI. There were 78 schools in the state that were designated as priority. Just a reminder, there are 1,238 schools in the state of South Carolina. Also, there are subgroup designations. The first of those is ATSI, and those are based on subgroups. If you see that, there were 400, um, designations of students with disabilities. There were 119 that were designated due to race. There were 79 schools in the state that were designated for poverty, 24 for Hispanic, 14 for multilingual, 10 for white. When you look at that line, a, a school could have been in students with disabilities and also black. So you can be, um, an ATSI school based on multiple designations. So that's, um, important to know. So that's not definite, 400 specific schools. That could also include be part of the 119 that were designated by race. There's also TSI, which is consistently underperforming. And as you see, um, the numbers there of schools that were designated in those categories based on subgroup designations. And then there are TSI warning schools, and you see those numbers listed there. So I'll just give you a moment to look at that. And when you see, um, the double asterisk, there were 58 schools in the state that this was their second cycle for being designated an ATSI school for students with disabilities. So how did that fall for schools in Greenville County? In our underperforming schools, and that is simply, um, based on schools, and this is their report card rating, and this is a state designation. Any school that owned their report card received unsatisfactory or below average. They were considered a underperforming school. And as you see there, those are our schools that were underperforming. There were 259 that were designated this in the state. And of that, 3% of our schools make up that 259. That's Alexander, Armstrong, Berea Middle, Fisher Middle, Lakeview Middle, Tanglewood Middle, Southside High, and Berea High. Chronically underperforming schools, these are schools, um, that had an unsatisfactory on their report card. There were six of those in the state, and we had one in our district, which was Carolina High. So that was 17% of the state. And then underperforming districts, there were four districts in the state of South Carolina that was underperforming. And as you see, um, Greenville County was not underperforming. So that calls for celebration. Just an overview of, or all students of subgroup data, just to remind you that comprehensive support and improvement, those are our CSI schools. These are the bottom 5% of Title I schools in the state. So you get on CSI, if you're in the bottom 5% and you're Title I, or you're any high school that has a graduation rate less than 70%. So that's the definition, that's how you're designated. Priority schools are the bottom 10% of all schools. ATSI, which we call additional targets to support and improvement, are the lowest performing subgroup schools, the bottom 5% based on the subgroup. And then target to support and improvement, consistently underperforming, that's a three-year designation, and that subgroup is below 10%. And underperforming is an annually, um, identified category, and that's a subgroup below 10%. Just give you a moment just to think about that. Also, it's, it's to be noted that if a school is designated an ATSI school, which is the green category there that you see, more than two times, more than two cycles, they are automatically in the third cycle, if they're, they're not off the list by the third cycle, they are automatically CSI, whether they're Title I or not. So that's something we have to pay attention to. So just an example. To be an ATSI school, your subgroup has to be compared to, the points that the subgroup gets has to be, is compared to the overall student performance of students in the CSI school. So for example, if you have an elementary school and they are the top of the CSI schools, remember that's the bottom 5%, but they are the top. So if all of their students received 30.79 points, if any student, um, group did not perform above that, so let's say they just scored 24.4, four points in students with the disabilities, then that's elementary school would be designated ATSI due to students with disabilities because that score was below the 30.79. An example in middle school, if the overall top 5% school was 27.48 and students in your school of poverty, the most points they got were 23.2, then your school would be ATSI due to poverty. And you can see the breakdown for high school. This is just an example of how you would become an ATSI group for a subgroup. Just want to remind you that the subgroup is compared to the top school in the CSI category, which is the bottom 5% of schools in the state based on Title I. Okay? Definitions, I just think we can't hear this enough, comprehensive support and improvement. Definition is any Title I school in the bottom 5% of the total weighted points index ranking, or any high school, that's, listen, this is any high school with a graduation rate less than 70% or any ATSI school that has not exited after two cycles. So we had two schools that were in the CSI category. Those were Berea Middle and Lakeview Middle. Remember, there were 59 schools identified in the state. We had two in our district, which was 3% of the schools identified in the state for CSI. Priority, remember this is any school with an overall weighted pointed index at or below the 10th percentile. There were 78 schools identified in the state. We had two in our district, which was made up 3% of the population. So that would be, that was Tanglewood Middle and Carolina High. I think it's important to note that remember our student population makes up 10% of the state population. Additional target support and improvement, this is based on any school with one or more subgroups performing at or below the fifth percentile in the overall weighted point index. So for targeted support, there were 646 schools identified with, um, eight, as ATSI. You see the schools in our district, elementary, middle, and high that were identified for some particular subgroup. Um, you can see, um, the majority of those were students with disabilities. And where you see the double asterisk, that means that school was identified for that population, that subgroup for the second cycle. In the state, 92% of the ATSI state identified schools were identified for the students with disability subgroup. And Greenville County School made up 6% of this 92% of schools identified with students with disabilities. I want to say right here that, um, 65% of our students with disabilities spend 80% of their time in general education. So we recognize in Greenville County as well as our state that this is a general ed tier one instruction issue. It's not a sped issue, it's a general ed issue. And there are, um, things that the state is putting in place, there are structures and processes and strategies we in Greenville County began putting in place two and three years ago because we saw this, this coming. Target support and improvement, so these consistently underperforming is any school with one or more subgroup performing at or below the 10%. Remember, ATSIs 5%, TSI is 10% in the overall weighted point index for three consecutive years. And this is identified annually. TSI warning definition is any school with one or more subgroups performing at or below the 10th percentile in the overall weighted point index. So in consistently unperforming schools, Greenville County had no schools in this category, a point of celebration. In target support, we had, um, there were 731 identified in the state. And these are our schools that were identified for, as the warning status. And this made up 4% of those 731 schools. And I'll give you a moment to look at that. And as I said, this is identified annually. So that concludes the presentation on state designations and where our schools fall. Um, as it relates to state designations, I know in January, you received a report of what our elementary and middle schools are doing to support our schools around subgroup and tier one, um, instruction. And I think Jeff will be presenting to you on May, the strategies and supports that we're giving to high schools. But are there any questions at this point?
Tara, appreciate your stepping up and helping out with this today. Dr. Stiles and then Ms. Goodman, call while.
Tara, that was great. Thank you. I just had a question about the students with disabilities. Obviously, that seemed to be the problem area, and I understand why as a former principal. Were self-contained students, were they included in that data?
Yes, students, um, self-contained students, all of our students take a state test. Some of them take what we call the ALT, but those scores are factored in, into this. But the majority of these students are the students that are in our general ed classrooms every day.
But that could still skew your data, especially if you were a school that had a self-contained, one or more self-contained classroom, right?
Typically, what we find is our students that take, um, and Ms., Dr. Hogan could speak to this better than I can, but students that take our SE ALT actually don't hurt our data. They actually sometimes help that data.
Well, I was, you know, I was just asking that because that seems to be a problem area. And certainly with our advocacy committee, perhaps something that we could advocate for. If there was a, um, a specific problem in relation to our students with disabilities. I know there's a lot of discussion about that at the state level. So I would hope and, um, that if, if there's something that we could advocate for in that regard, uh, please let us know.
All right. Thank you.
Jill?
Thank you for the presentation. What I wanted to know was, has there ever been a, uh, study done about when sped moved, um, when they moved, um, our special ed students to inclusion in the, in the school district? when they moved our special ed students to inclusion in the, in the school district? The data on that? Cause I know that most, most of what I saw was the, was our special needs students. And I know we used to have a lot of classes where they, they were in self-contained. But then when they moved to inclusion, I want to know if that had an impact on this.
Right, Ms. Hogan?
I think what you're referring to is we use Stetson training for a long time and did inclusion training. I don't know if you remember that. We had a company come in and did inclusion training. I think it was a three-year cycle. It might've even been five years. It was prior to my arrival. When I came in 2016, we did open with a kind of state of the district and met with principals at principals meeting and talked about the fact that we, what I believed was we did have a lot of students that were sitting in gen ed in inclusion who maybe needed to more support. At the same time, there were some that were, that were not in. So we needed to really look at that. At that point, our graduation rate was 50% and it has gone up every year since then. We did stop using that particular company to do training and have really looked at more at analyzing data for each individual student so that we can make decisions based on each individual kid versus just an overall model from the company, if that helps.
Do you know whether that had an impact with, with moving them from their self-contained classes into gen ed? Cause I know that they have an assistant or they have, they have the special ed teachers to go in to the gen ed classes, right? To, to be support in there instead of them being in their self-contained, in the self-contained classes like we used to have?
We still have self-contained classes and we do have some teachers that do inclusion and some schools that do inclusion. What we've tried to do is really look at ensuring that we have a continuum of services at all locations. That doesn't mean that all schools necessarily do inclusion. When you ask if it's had an impact, I think that's kind of hard to discern. What we did look at at that time was our performance on state testing and our graduation rate, which we of course have monitored every year since then. Actually, just this past Wednesday, I went over some data with the principals talking about the fact that in addition to students with disabilities in their classroom that may need additional support, there were also students who were not identified. There were typical students sitting in those classrooms that needed that same kind of support from their general education teacher.
Is the percentage still the same for the students with disabilities in calculating for, for our state report card? Like, you know, it was like if you had five students in student with disabilities, that was when you got a gig on not meeting the quota for that school? What's, what's the percentage now or how many students is it now that if, if you have so many students with disabilities that don't, that don't meet the criteria for the test?
I believe what you're asking Ms. Goodman-Cowall is what number constitutes a subgroup for reporting?
Right.
Right.
Cause it used to be.
Some subgroups, it's 10, some it's 20. And then you also have to test 95% of the subgroup. If you don't test 95% of the subgroup, you also get, your designation gets lowered.
Subgroups, I believe, used to be 40?
Used to.
It used to be 40 and it went down.
Now a much smaller number can cause your school
To be, yeah.
To fall into one of these categories when that, you're talking about, if you flip back at some of these, you know, you've got Eastside and Wade Hampton just picking, because that's two of the biggest high schools in this list. If you're talking about 10 students, you're talking about 10 students in a population of 18 to 1900 students. So that definition has been, has become much more precise, includes more students. It would be very difficult to go back and say, what was the effect of that on these students? Now, what we do know on our students in general, our test scores, pull out the drop, the dip for COVID, our test scores have steadily increased in the same timeframe that we've done more inclusion and, and are meeting the definition of having special needs students, those receiving special needs services in the least restrictive environment. All our test scores have gone up during that period of time across the board. The grad rate within that subgroup has increased and outpaced the grad rate improvement in the whole population as well as I think it's the highest improvement in grad rate of any subgroup. So we know those factors, it, it did not have a negative effect on test scores in the whole. But there's really not a way for us to go back and look at that group pre-inclusion as a subgroup and post-inclusion as a subgroup. It would be extremely time intensive and it wouldn't give you a very good comparison because you're going to be talking about two, actually two different groups of students. Ones that we have now would not have been in that system previously.
And it's important to know that students take grade level standards-based assessment regardless of their subgroup. Many years ago, when it was a 40, when you had a subgroup of 40, you also could do all grade level testing, which, so you really can't look at what happened 10 years ago because it was different, it was different rules. Now they're, they take, they have to take grade level assessment on the standards regardless of the subgroup. The only subgroup that can be eliminated is if it's their first year in the United States for ML population. Otherwise, everyone takes the exact same test unless they take SEAL, which is still grade level standards-based, just in a, in a different format.
Ms. Hogan, when, when they changed, when was it that they changed it from the 40 to the 10? Because that has a big impact on us, do you know?
Yeah, I'm going to look at Dr. McCreary for that data. So I don't, I do not know.
Did they say why they changed it from, from us being able to, it was 40 and, and going down to 10? Yeah, it figures. Okay. Okay. All right, that's, that's all you had to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Mr. Cochran and then Ms. Mosley.
Thank you. I would like to go back to slide 11 if we may for a moment. I was just wondering why there is such a discrepancy in the percentage of our high school students that have an issue with achievement of our students with disabilities when compared to our elementary and middle schools. I mean, just looking at the list, of course, it's about the same number of elementary schools as high schools, but yet it's a small percentage of our elementary schools and it's an extremely high percentage of our high schools. So I was just wondering about that.
I think when you look at the size of our high schools, so you have a greater number of students with disabilities in a 2,000 high school versus a 400 school. I think that the sheer number is one reason for that. I think also if you look at our standards as you go up in the grade and you go up in the content, you see they get much more rigorous and comprehensive. You have students at the high school that are taking Algebra I, EOC, Biology EOC, US History EOC, and, and English II EOC at a very complex level at the high school. And I think both of those things attribute to that. I will say that there's been in the past three to four years, I know Ms. Hogan and the academics department, as well as Mr. Reimer and Mr. Williams have worked tirelessly at looking at strategies and support. And they meet three times a year and, and look at disaggregated data of all these students' subgroups to, to monitor that too. And they've been putting systems in place, at least for three years, I know of, to really monitor this, knowing that there were issues, which is why we moved to training all our staff on UDL strategies and supports and also having the resource of Goalbook that helps our teachers differentiate instruction for students, of all students, not just students with disabilities.
Mr. Cochran, if I could add to, very few students get diagnosed or labeled as a student with a disability at high school. So this is one of those times I think it's important to look at our entire system because they are generally identified at a much younger grade.
The issues that we have here as far as the state kind of flagging us here with our high school students with disabilities, are our issues in this area shared by most of the other high schools in the state? I'm assuming they probably are.
Yes, as you say, I mean, 4%, we make up 4% of the 646 schools. So yes, and if you remember, oh, slide, what slide that was? There were 92% of the, of schools that were identified in ATSI were because of students with disabilities. So it is a statewide issue that I know the state is addressing at the, at the state department. I know in, in the, in the standards and in career, college and career readiness department, every meeting we go to, they're looking at it. I know Tracy gets a lot when she goes to meetings because they know that this is an issue that we really need to pinpoint and we need to work on as a state and as a district.
I believe, and this doesn't go directly to those subgroups because you don't have, I don't think you have the list of all the high schools that are on it. But there are 10 high schools up there, right? And there are 200, it used to be 212. There are over 200 high schools in the state. Logically, as we do with most things, we should represent 10% of that. So obviously at 10, at 10 of 200 and something, we're, we're half what you would expect is to be represented as far as the list of high schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Angie?
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so this makes me crazy. I'm going to speak from a parent perspective as well as a representative of this district. When I hear you say they're looking at this stuff at the state, and maybe this is a better question for Ms. Hogan, are they really looking at this, the disconnect that exists between the way we, I'm all about accountability, the way we evaluate student success, let's say the student disability population? And so my son was in gen ed, not at all, he's not on diploma track, that's my older son that has intellectual disability. And yet, there were so many other things that could be measured as far as his success in that setting compared to a self-contained setting that are not evaluated and are not looked at. And I know that every single student with a disability is different, which makes it tricky. But I feel like this has been a systemic problem for a really long time in that there is a disconnect between how we measure the success of inclusion, the success of education in the, within the special needs population at any school, at any level. And I just, it's extremely frustrating to me as a parent and now sitting here from this perspective, it's, it's frustrating for me, for our district, really for any school district. So are they, are they really looking at this?
I, I think what we have to remember is, is sometimes this, and not to defend the state, but the state's hands are often tied by their federal accountability piece of it. You know, I share your frustration. I will say that I personally don't spend a lot of time talking about, in this percentage, about our students who are maybe spend the majority of their time in self-contained placement because I do believe that we've got to increase our expectations for all students. And if we do that, we sometimes lessen that piece of saying, well, student has a disability, so we expect their performance to be lower. I did a slide with principals last week explaining this is no shock. In, in 1975, when IDA became, came into place, they didn't measure any outcomes for kids with disabilities. You know, we didn't even start looking at results for kids with disabilities until 2014. And then nothing happened until 2019. So that's no excuse, but I'm saying it, it takes to move that ship and get people to really understand that we've got to have kids in core. We've got to have strategies in place for all kids that are, you know, so that we don't over-identify, so we don't pull students out and deal with those things that it's just not going to happen overnight. I do think we are working very hard and, you know, I did a whole presentation about our gains. We have gains as a district. They're not showing in this format. But also the rules changed from the last time they did that to this time. So I mean, it's very hard to keep up with that if that answers your question.
Well, it does.
I'd like to elaborate on what Ms. Hogan said if I might. First, you know, one of the things we constantly try to keep in our forefront and focus, we want us to graduate and we want them to have college credit or industry certification because we know that's useful, it's applicable, and it says they can do the work. So much of this right here is driven by federal and state accountability. And while some of it can be laid at the feet of the federal government and their push for accountability going back to the nineties, some of it rests solely at the feet of the state government. And while I think we would all like to think that this will get better and they're looking at it, well, here's the result of looking at it. The first time I sat in a room in the nineties as a principal, somebody came from the very first EOC, started talking about how they were going to measure schools. It's been looked at constantly since then. And here's what's true about that. Through multiple leadership individuals at the state level, through multiple federal administrations, it has become increasingly more complicated, more complex and less meaningful to the people. It was intended to inform, is intended to inform parents in the community about how a school is performing. And I don't, I think it fails to do that because people don't understand it. And yes, it constantly, the, the standards constantly change, the test that's given constantly changes, the, the definitions constantly change. And at the end of the day, what's it improving for students? Again, we prefer to focus on the outcomes you can see they can hold in their hand and we believe really speaks to their ability to do things, whether that thing be get college credit or whether that thing be displayed to an employer, they can do job A, B, C or D. There's always the commitment to look at it and to change, but generally that results in more complexity. When you have to have somebody with a degree in statistics or training in that discipline to decipher this for professional educators, which they have to do in a lot of cases, how is that helpful to a parent? And I would argue it's not. I remember, this has been more than 10 years ago, sitting in a room with some parents from a high school and back then you got two grades. You remember getting two grades on a report card? Their school had an A and an F. And if you ask every parent in that room, they would tell you my school's an A. Cause I asked them that, what do you think it is? Was it an A? At the end of the conversation, they said, well, we don't care anything about this. We believe what we believe about our school. So what purpose is it serving? It's, it's, it seems often that it's simply to set goals and keep moving them without any opportunity to reach them. And when you set up a system that is based on testing people on more standards than a teacher can teach, an average teacher with an average class can teach an average year and you don't tell that teacher which one of the standards you're going to test, well, there's no way we would do that in a regular curriculum. We wouldn't let a third grade teacher or a chemistry teacher or a seventh grade math teacher give students classroom assessments on material they hadn't taught before. Certainly not for a grade, you might do it on some kind of pre-test, but not for a grade. But we're grading our schools on a system that is structured so that they is structured so that they can be asked test questions that they could not have reasonably been taught. And that is a flawed, and I would argue, rather worthless system. Now, should there be accountability? Absolutely. Nobody denies there should be accountability. Spending tax dollars to achieve a public outcome, there should be accountability. You should want to know, we should want to know, how do our students do compared to other students, maybe throughout the country? Good school districts did that 40 and 50 years ago. They gave some sort of nationally-normed standardized test every couple or three grades. So they got a snapshot over time of how your students in your system did compared to others. It could be on a Iowa test of basic skills, California test of basic skills, there were like four or five nationally-normed tests. So you did know, all right, our students, they're about here compared to students in other districts. But I would argue the outcome-based evaluation is more important. Are they prepared if they already taken the next step for after graduation? So, you know, we certainly give the opportunity, there's now a new administration for education in the state of South Carolina, they've not had an opportunity to weigh into this, but there've been a lot of new administrations in education since the 90s. It's not gotten better. In some cases, some incremental improvement has been made in dropping the number of tests, and that lasted only briefly, until then the state was requiring us to replace the fewer tests that were dropped with more tests. And that was a state legislative requirement. So, you know, I'd like to be hopeful that this will improve, but past history, if it is a predictor of the future, would indicate that's not likely to happen. Yet we're still judged on this, our schools are still judged on it. And people in the community look at that and think, well, this is a meaningful evaluation of how our school's doing. Particularly the 75% that don't have children in school. People who have children in school, kind of go back to my example I gave earlier, that group I was talking to 10 or more years ago, they already have an opinion on how their school's doing. And generally, it's a pretty good opinion about how their school's doing. It doesn't reflect what they know, because they see it every day when their child comes home, or over time as their child's been in school. But it does mean something to people out here who don't have that direct connection, and are forming an opinion about the school system based on no direct connection to that system. Thank you.
Okay, so I agree with all of what you just said. And I think the truest statement out of that is that we are evaluating schools, or I should say, ranking schools or scoring schools based on testing students on things that they really shouldn't have been even, or hadn't been exposed to, or hadn't been taught, or, I don't know. The disconnect is real for me, and it's very frustrating, and it, there's so much more behind those numbers to me. And I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we move forward to Ms. Middleton, does anyone else want to speak? We've got two minutes left. Without objection, we'll extend for five minutes. Anne Marie.
Thank you for that great presentation. Based on what Dr. Royster said and Ms. Mosley, I am not a fan of standardized tests. As a former teacher, they are just, never seem to hit the mark. And I don't know how else you can evaluate, if you need to evaluate and compare. I guess you have to have some kind of a test or something, but I look back into things when my kids were getting ready to go to college, and we were looking at U.S. News and World Report, remember that? And, you know, they would list all the colleges, and these are the best colleges, and this college scored a 97, and this one a 95. And it's just so arbitrary, you know? It's just, it's all on what you make it. But I'm looking at slide number 15, and the high schools, I see Eastside and Greer multilingual. So these are children that I guess are struggling with English.
English is their second language.
English is their second language, and so they're required to take this test in English, right?
Correct.
Try to struggle through that, I suppose. So is this a pretty big problem, this multilingual?
Actually, just so you know, that a student that moves into the United States the first year, they do not have to take an assessment. They have a year to acquire the language. And our multilingual language learners are progressing at a very high rate once they are with us for a while.
Well, the greater challenge, I think, inside that population is a phenomenon we've seen emerge probably within the last couple of years more prominently. We're now getting students that are multilingual learners, i.e. English not their first language, at 15, 16, 17 years old, and they've never been in school. That was to the point of almost unheard of five years ago. That is extremely challenging. You mentioned, you cited the example of high school. That's going to be true at each of those levels, but it's obviously much more challenging if they're supposed to be in the 10th or 11th grade, and they've never been in school. Within a year, they got to take the test.
They've got to take an Algebra I, a Biology, English II, and U.S. History in English.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Karen, thank you again very much.
You're welcome.
And, I'm sorry, you're supposed to stand on the table and wave your arm.
I threw a hand up, and I don't know if it was high enough.
That's okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for this. Y'all, and Superintendent Royster, you laid it out, and thank you for that. Y'all, we know that our standards run on seven-year revision cycles. Our instructional materials across the state, millions and millions of dollars try to keep up with it, and they never do. They can't hit the mark with that. We know that our evaluation and accountability model, we've got two entities that essentially are duking it out, I will call that out. And we also have high-stakes testing, the process by which those tests are developed is, I can say it now, wretched. The way that they run through the standards and determine which items, and is this good, and does this hit the mark, the majority of which are multiple choice, okay? Which, we all know how well you can assess something with just multiple choice items. My question, or my wonder, is as far as national, where do our students, because I would posit Greenville students can hold their own on a national scale. We just don't get a lot of the opportunities to really show that. Where are, where are we with the NAEP assessment? And if that's not something that we have right now, or what have you, can we, can we see that at some point? Just how we're faring with that?
Yes.
I believe Dr. Carey spoke more pointedly to this, but there are only a handful of districts in the country that can get district-level NAEP assessment data. Is that right, Jason? By largest, you know, about LA, New York.
So we can't, we don't have that.
Even as big as we are, they will not break that down. And how many would test with NAEP generally in a testing cycle, Jason? But, but total number of students that we would likely test in a cycle? So even if we could get it back, probably wouldn't give us a lot of data.
Do we know what the cut is as far as like, so we're what, 44th largest, 46th largest? Is there, is there a cut somewhere as far as like, you got to be the 10th largest?
No, deferred.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes item 3.01. And Ms. Bush, I'll turn it back over to you.
Now we will move into our administration portion, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Stiles. Dr. Stiles?
Thank you. Our first matter of business in administration is item number 4.01, Planning Process Between Greenville County Schools and the County of Greenville. This item is for information only, and it was submitted by Mr. Chuck Sailors. Mr. Sailors, would you like to speak to this item before I turn it over to Dr. Royster?
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Ladies and gentlemen, as you may recall, this is a piece of a conversation that originally generated with the advocacy committee earlier this year, mainly coming around our being able to better understand the process that is used, or lack thereof, when developing growth models for the county, and decisions that are made at the county level that have a direct impact on us, especially when it comes to issues such as school construction. So I'll ask the staff to do their presentation, and I will have some questions following.
Dr. Royster?
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. And with Mr. Sailor's introduction of that topic, I'll simply turn it over to Greg Stanfield, and he will follow through with the presentation. Mr. Stanfield?
Good morning, Dr. Royster and members of the board. I'm here this morning back with you. And we hope that this will give you some good information, really the process itself, or how we respond to the process. There'll be a couple of items at the end of the presentation for you all.
Perhaps look over and discuss as well. Excuse me, let me go back one. Just a little summary of the subdivision process itself. Perhaps you see a sign on a piece of property there that will be a proposed subdivision. So there's a preliminary plat that's submitted to the county. You see that on the, on the property itself. There's a little depiction for you here. The SAC committee, which is also known as the Subdivision Advisory Committee, reviews and provides comments on that particular development. The SAC meeting itself is open to the public, but there's no public comment at that point. And then the SAC comments are consolidated into a staff report that's presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes the final decisions on the subdivisions, not the council. And then the public may attend the Planning Commission meeting and provide their comments there, but they can also provide written comments to the county staff during the process as well. So that just gives you a summary of the information. We'll give a few slides here which talk a little bit about the process. Typically, you have an engineered plat that comes in to the county, and it looks something like this. It's submitted to the County Subdivision Administration Department for a review, and some things that it includes is lot, count, lot sizes. You see the road layout there. You may have the road sizes, the names of the road, whether it has any retention or detention pond locations are on, plotted on the piece of property as well. So that's typically what will come into the county office for their review. As far as the SAC Subdivision Advisory Committee itself, it's really a technical review committee that's comprised of a number of different entities included, but not limited to waters, sewer, fire, county engineering, transportation, county land development, the E911 addressing, the floodplain zoning, and also the Department of Transportation has comments or can have comments as well about that. The subdivisions are presented to the Planning Commission only, not to the county council. The Planning Commission makes the final decisions on subdivisions, and the council does review rezonings for residential request. The County Subdivision Administration Department transmits an electronic version of the plat for review. It's a program called Blue Beam, and it accepts comments from the SAC committee members, and that's added to the plat within one week of the process. So that gives you a little bit of an overview of what comes into the processes here in Greenville County. And the next part of the presentation, we'll talk about kind of how we look at that and how we respond as well to those plats and developments. We review all of those plats, we add comments, any current assignments for those particular developments. We note that it's possibly subject to change as well. Any distance assigned to the schools is noted, whether or not sidewalks are on the plat or not. And then we also give them a potential of student generation based on average student yields, assuming full buildout of the development. We give them, or other comments as well, as we pass them to our Transportation Department as well, and where they can look at the packets as well, any type of information that they would like to provide. We keep an extensive list of developments, just about all developments and multifamily developments. We have them on our system, which is the ArcView system, which is generally the GIS system that is used by most large systems around the country. It's a way we geographically keep up with this information. We review the proposed subdivisions monthly. We may assign them as necessary based on a number of different factors and board policies. And then each spring and summer, we conduct an annual inventory of all subdivisions. So we literally drive into all subdivisions that are being developed. We count the number of lots that are being developed, the number of lots that are there. So we have an accurate count of what's going on in all of the neighborhoods. It takes us most of the summer to go through this. It's quite extensive. And all of this helps us with our forecasting for the different school districts, as well as our long-range facility plan and CIP process. Some current issues, maybe some potential solutions out in the long run regarding development. Major issues typically revolve around the transportation infrastructure, so the capacity or the condition of the surrounding roads. Some issues that could be addressed are public meetings for group developments, which perhaps are similar to what the city of Greenville currently does. And the county's working on a new software program which will give us a better understanding of some of the database, including multifamily developments. They'll also be able to contact us sooner as well. And the county is currently working on a unified development ordinance. So they want to join the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, floodplain regulations, tree and sign ordinance into one unified document. And hopefully, when they do that, they'll be better able to carry out their goals of an adopted comprehensive plan, which is what most large counties in the country have. So that gives you a little bit of an overview of the process that we work with, with them, the communication that we have with them. Some other actions and potential communications do exist. Our Board of Trustees or Advocacy Committee has been talking about possible use of impact fees. And the county has recently created a new Communications and Governmental Affairs Committee, which is maybe an avenue that we can use to communicate things that we have regarding development. We hope the new council members may look at growth and development from, some of them have ran on recent campaigns of looking more closely at that and the guidelines as well. So we look forward to that and look forward to how they will address growth here in Greenville County. So that's a snapshot of how development has worked in Greenville County, how we respond to development as well. And we'll turn it back over to the board members. And we'll turn it back over to the board members.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stanfield. That was an excellent presentation and very informative. Mr. Sailors, I know you had a question.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Greg, thanks for putting this together. I know this has been an on again, off again conversation mainly because you've been trying to identify what the county is actually working on to try to bridge a gap that has become quite an issue. And there's a lot of things that they still need to do. So let me um just dive in here. When the subdivision committee, SAC, gets together at their meetings, you referenced in your presentation, the items that they discussed. So for example, you referenced historically, they've asked for the school system to give input on things such as sidewalks and, you know, uh, physical issues, essentially infrastructure issues related to whatever that particular area would be. But have they ever come to, as the developer or the county, ever come to the school system and said, uh, we have a developer that wants to build a 400 unit apartment complex two blocks from this school. Do you have room for the students?
Yep, you know, we have Skip here today as well and he'll address some of this as well.
Good morning. It's been a week since we've seen you, but um, Mr. Sailors, yes, that does occur in some instances, especially with larger developments. I can reference recently City of Simpsonville, for instance. The planner down there called and said, hey, uh, there's a development, a larger one that's in the works, which we're aware of, you know. Do you, well, luckily, in this case, uh, we do have an addition slated for Simpsonville Elementary, for instance. He's well versed and aware of our long range facilities plan, which is great. So he's pretty good at reading, you know, our capacity, et cetera, and says, hey, it looks like you will and I noticed that. So we do have a great rapport with all the planning departments throughout the municipalities in the county in that regard. And if they do have a question, they usually will reach out, say one of the planners, you know, and say, hey, is there an issue here, you know? And it can be also from a developer. Sometimes they'll contact us before we even see something through the county. They'll say, I'm looking at this, you know, what are some potential issues possibly? Or what are the current assignments? And they all know that caveat's subject to change. Because if we don't have capacity and they know this, we will reassign them as necessary. And it may not be the closest school, which they're aware of as well.
It also has an effect on school choice as well, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir. So um, this was discussed briefly last week at the workshop, but that can limit school choice, obviously. As an attendance area grows, we may have to limit school choice. We referenced, in fact, City of Greer, um, some of their developments, for instance, we're aware of. And so we may have to cut back on choice as development and attendance area grows.
So is it a fair assessment to say that your experience department to department is historically been more successful with the municipalities versus the county? They're trying, but they're a little behind.
I work there, so, excuse me, some of their ordinances are outdated. It's been decades, honestly.
You're being polite, thank you.
Um, well, we've got a rapport we want to maintain, but I will tell you that we're in a different place right now than we were. Excuse me, just getting over my COVID, but anyway, I'm I'm well aware away from it, so I'm safe. But we uh, we are in a different place than when we spoke prior to the election, for instance. There's been a change on council. I'll tell you, last week, there was a development that's what's called a flexible review district. So they were looking at this and this is something where county council can make determinations on. They asked for SOD in a subdivision, in essence. That's far and, you know, few that I've ever seen something like that. I mean, that's different. So with unified development ordinance as well, the council will have to approve that. And that's gonna like us, like it was pointed out, join quite a few ordinances together. It'll be better. It'll carry out the comprehensive plan in a better fashion, which has been a more unified effort, if you will, before a developer might say, I want to build down here. And then he'd go to the sewer department and they would approve it if he paid for it. Well, now, excuse me, with this new comprehensive plan, everyone's on board. So Metro, who you're aware, they'll say no. If it's against the comp plan, we're not going to run sewer down there. So it it's a lot better than where the tail used to wag the dog, you know? It's a lot better with this new comp plan and.
And and I appreciate that, but the one thing the county's got to understand is the decisions they make affect our bottom line dramatically. For example, y'all have heard me explain and complain about the fact that we have an elementary school not too far from where I live that is exceeding capacity. Four hundred unit apartment within a five iron shot away, currently under construction. And for us, and there's no place to put a portable safely. To add eight classrooms onto that building is going to cost us millions of dollars. Every taxpayer in this county, it will cost millions of dollars. And that's the rub when it comes to the lack of communication with the county. So can you tell us in your conversations that they've seen an aha moment and that they're going to be a little more conversational, for lack of a better phrase?
They are. We've had a meeting since November, for instance. We meet quarterly with the county. And this software could be a potential game changer for us as well. They may actually give us direct access. We're not there yet. They're not even in their new building yet. So there's, they're 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 trying to get into that building and get things taken care of.
Access, we'll have to pay for it.
But that that would be one thing would help tremendously as far as like you've referenced, uh, multifamily developments that are zoned and they simply go get a permit and build. Whereas, as mentioned in the presentations, for instance, the city of Greenville, every development goes before pretty basically the design review board if it's a large scale development for multifamily. So they're going to review the architectural designs prior to it even going to the Planning Commission, but it would also go to the Planning Commission. And they're aware of that and that's something that might be addressed potentially in the Unified Development Ordinance. Those are some of the things that county council ultimately could decide on.
In the discussions related to clearing up and cleaning up ordinances, have you heard anything related to changes in how they select and embody the Planning Commission? Because it's my understanding right now that the Planning Commission is populated by real estate agents and building developers and that's it.
Not yet. That that right now in the Unified Development Ordinance, it's basically the technical aspects. So they haven't got into any of the policies for teachers, although that might be a bit different as well. It wouldn't be tied to the zoning ordinance anyway.
How many, how many subdivisions are currently under planning to the best of your knowledge?
We look at more lots to go, um, which is in the long range facilities plan and there's, gosh, we have to pull up the document and can look it up.
Okay, we can look it up in.
Thousands, obviously, of lots to go.
Do that, you also project student population increases on our back for our back.
Correct.
And so you do share that with the county and the municipalities.
Correct, yes, sir.
So they're not walking into this blind.
No, sir. The those comments are posted and actually the public can see them as well because they're posted on that blue beam and then that's through the SAC and then the Planning Commission receives those.
Uh, again, another concern that came from committee conversations is when you have the community talking about projections of our population in the upstate will double over the next hypothetically 10 years. You know, growth's not a bad thing, but the overriding concern the committee has is that, or the board and the administration, I would imagine, is that when growth of that nature takes place, we have to pay bills to build buildings. And we need to be more, I guess, informed as they move forward some of that. It seems that the county is working toward that, but there's still some long way to go.
I think some of what you brought up would potentially address some of those issues, especially with the impact.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Because impact fees have become quite the conversation and not just here. Because there are, I use the tri-county area in the Low Country, Charleston, Dorchester, Berkeley Counties. They're seeing, Burke, I believe, on a percentage basis, basically the same growth or the same rate of growth as we are.
In some cases, Fort Mill and Dorchester have seen student growth numbers equal to our numbers, which for them is a much higher percentage.
And so in conversations that some of us have had with our counterparts in those school systems, uh, the fact that impact fees are so limitedly used in this state could be something that needs to be addressed because that puts skin in the game with the developer. And I have no problem building a building to teach students, but I think that if uh, if we're going to be placed in a position of having to expand campuses and build new campuses and we are being put in that position because somebody goes and builds 500 houses across the street from one of our high schools, we need to make sure that we cover our own taxpayers in this school system. So uh, I'll ask this of Dr. Royster or you gentlemen, other than Fort Mill, who else uses impact fees in South Carolina that we know of?
There's three, aren't there, Skip?
There's, there's quite a few, um, believe it or not, easily in the last two years started.
Not, not the school district.
I'm sorry, not the school district.
I think your, it was your question specifically, the school districts. Thank you. Fort Mill.
Just a handful.
Over. All right. Rock Hill and York, they all four have one now.
I think so.
York tried to increase theirs and that was denied. Then Somerville and maybe that's it.
And as of recent, they tried in Anderson, but that one failed.
Anderson won, I think.
I believe it was Anderson won about a year ago.
We have, uh, do we know what the process would be for the establishment of an impact fee? Is that, is that a council decision?
Generally speaking, the process would be, we would identify, you all would identify a a desire and need to do so. That would have to be justified by a study. Uh, I'm not sure we're real clear at this point whether that study can be an in-house or a third party study. Then you would vote as a body to request of the county council to impose the impact fee and the final decision would rest with them. But Doug, anything you want to add to that?
The county council would ultimately be the the entity that would have a planning commission study. We would be part of that to provide information and perhaps a consultant to 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 support. But ultimately, the study comes from them.
So in other words, what you're saying is the way the current statute is writ, then then the the Planning Commission would facilitate the study to determine if there's an impact fee?
Yes.
So the people that are going to pay the impact fee are going to be in charge of determining whether you have an impact fee, only in America.
The county council would be the one that would adopt the the study, that's correct.
Okay. I tell you, it's when you love government. Then, Dr. Royster, I guess the next thing would be is that the the advocacy committee could revisit the need issued, conversation related to a impact fee study and since the Planning Commission would be responsible for it, would we have any cost incurred in that or?
Doug, I don't know if you're able to speak to that or not. I'm, I'm just not certain.
Yeah, I'll be happy to look into that that more. Traditionally, with other school districts, um, to my knowledge, several of them have hired outside consultants to help bring that information together, to work with their respective county council and to kind of move forward in that process. And and that's something we would just have to examine.
But I, in knowing those school districts, I doubt they have an internal function like we do in planning and demographics. So I guess what part we're kind of unclear on is what of that was limited by their type of staff they might have and what might be required. We already know, for example, we will share that, we may have already shared that with the advocacy committee, we share with the whole board, how much growth has cost us in recent past? And if you look, of course, we have it on here later in this meeting and we went over that last week, the long range facility plan. Most every one of those projects in there that we accelerated the timeframe on, just about all of them have to do with growth. All those additions, uh, there were what, six additions in there and or maybe seven additions, they all have to do with growth.
Thank you, Mr. Sailors. Does that conclude your questions? Okay, Ms. Brett?
My question was on the development and impact tax. When I was elected in November, that was one of the first questions I asked Mr. Webb and he gave me a lot of information on that. I believe it's time that we do look into figuring out how to compensate ourselves for the growth that we're seeing. I'll have a question, it was answered, but I I I agree, I think it's time to look at that.
Thank you, Mrs. Brett. And Mrs. Presley?
Thank you. The Fort Mill, Clover, Rock Hill, Somerville, those areas who have already done those impact studies, obviously that would be public information, correct? And I know we're talking in some situations, apples and oranges, but is there anything that could be gleaned from some of those studies that have already been done? Connections that were made that would potentially help possibly the district, since we're in a position where we've got another entity who's going to be leading that study as Mr. Sailors has already pointed out? That would just be my wonder if there's already information that would, that would assist us with knowing what's coming.
We we would definitely look into their their plans and and, you know, utilize accordingly to whatever our needs would be.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. And Ms. Bush?
Yes, um, I know that adjoining us at the Anderson County line, they just went through this because I kept a close watch on their whole process because of all that migration into that northern part of Anderson, which is that Pottersville area. Yeah, which includes that Pottersville area is having huge rapid growth because of Greenville's growth. So people are going it as a suburb of Greenville, not really Anderson. And I know they went through the process, so it might be something we look at because their board was very positive in support of and kind of did a really good job in the presentation and all of that went to county and there it was just shut down immediately because the, you know, it was just the, um, I'm sure, it was very frustrating when I talked to some of their board members of the fact that they were so diligent in all the work they did to get the process to the county and then the whole political arena of, well, if we charge impact fees, people aren't going to build in Pottersville or in Anderson County anymore and we're going to lose all that growth. So at some point in time, and I think if we choose to go this this path, I think we have to, through the process, we have to make very sure that our community is aware and is supportive because it's not just all of us deciding whether it's time to do this. It's making sure that we have the ultimate people that are going to have to pass this, that we have all all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed and when we take it to them, they understand the purpose of growth without, and hopefully, our county has. they understand the purpose of growth without, and hopefully our county has, has begun to learn that, the ultimate, uh, process of having growth without having the investment and the infrastructure to support that growth. Because when a, when a, when a plant looks at that.
Excuse me, Ms. Bush, without exception, we'll add 10 minutes.
But when a, when, when a, when a company looks at or a developer looks at building or a company looks at locating, one of the first thing that they look at is the education system and, and how is it able to provide us educated workers for a plant that we're going to invest, uh, uh, you know, millions of dollars in? Are we going to have that workforce? So, um, I think we have to make sure that our other elected officials are going hand in hand with us toward that, um, uh, to reach that conclusion that we can't continue to have the growth without the investment to prepare for that growth. So I, I would just like to remind us that as we go that path, no matter how good, I saw it just happen in the last year in Anderson County was that they were, I, I was, I was so hopeful for them and felt like this could be possibly something that we could build into now and say, see what Anderson One has done and the growth there and how they're making that investment. And unfortunately, it did not end well for them with all, even with all the investment they put in the, the planning stage and the gathering, all the information.
Just a quick response. I think some of the issue with theirs was the amount, possibly the impact fee. If memory serves, it was, I want to say over $11,000, which is significantly, excuse me, different than others. So it, it, a lot of reasons involved, but that.
And that's a lesson we could learn too, is big steps, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Middleton?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, in talking to various community leaders or whatever, I feel that the, uh, school system is somewhat, they're somewhat dismissive of the schools. Um, I know that you get perfunctory notifications, we're going to build this, we got this going, here you go, figure out your zoning. Um, I'm sure the developers are very interested in, um, the schools because some of them, they're, sometimes they're building, you know, homes to go to specific schools and then they find out, oh, the kids are not going to go to those schools because they're already zoned out. So I know there's a big interest in that, but I'm looking at one of the slides and the, uh, SAC is the technical review committee comprised of numerous entities, including everything, transportation, you know, sod, uh, fire, sewer, everything, everything but schools, which is a huge elephant in the room, I think, I really do. And I feel that, is it possible that we from the schools can have an actual seat at the table where we are part of the planning of this and we're not just given this information as, okay, here you go, developer's building this big place, do your zoning thing? And I feel like you're being, and I could be wrong on this because I'm new, but I feel like you're being notified kind of after the fact. Is that true?
And I, my apologies for clarification, we are members and we probably should have listed ourselves and just did not, but we are absolutely a member of the SAC as well as what's called the PAC in your area for the city of Greer. There's just the planning advisory committee. So we do have a seat and literally sit at that table with gas, all those folks, public works, et cetera.
And you, um, affect development?
We, we are one of the players and we give our comments and then they take those comments and make decisions. So in, in essence, I would say at the end of the day, absolutely, potentially, it's up to them. But we do give our comments and our, do have a seat at the table, a literal seat at the table.
Yeah, I think it's maybe more pointedly, we have a seat to provide input and impact, we have no vote in the process. Nor, nor would any of those other entities so situated.
True. They give those comments as a technical review committee to the planning commission who makes the decision.
But do they, do they care, really care what the schools think or is it kind of like, okay, that's your problem to figure out the zoning? I kind of got that sense from people I talk to that are the schools even involved because principals and things are saying, hey, we got this 400, um, housing facility being constructed next door and we're already over capacity and they're worried about it.
They make the land use decisions ultimately. We, we do give input and we're aware, um, we maintain, like we said, the database. So, I mean, we, we do give input from, just like everyone else. Um, the water provider may say, well, you know, we don't have the capacity with an eight-inch line, it needs to be upgraded to a 16, 16-inch line or something, but everyone does provide their comments.
Sounds like though, like with the sewer, the sewer people can say, well, we're not going to provide sewer or whatever, but can you say, um, we do not have the capacity in these schools? And then what will be their response? Well, what will be their response? If you actually said, we do not have the capacity to take these kids, we have to build a school or add to a school, would they say, well, good, go for it?
Well, and part of that, part of our review and what we do too, would be to address that issue, whether it be through potentially reassignment, if there is a development and we don't have capacity at the assigned schools. That's the caveat that all the developers know, the subject to change, because they'll call and say, I know, I'm like, well, that's the issue. And I made reference in your area, for instance, Riverside, that attendance area is one. You almost may be able to see Riverside High, but you may be assigned to Greer because there's, there's capacity at Greer High. And, and we've got into that, you know, a fight, if you will, but with developers, like, but I'm so much closer, well, we, we don't have capacity there.
Also some unintended consequences from sewer authorities saying, well, we'll expand sewer. Well, then you may move your investment to a place where they currently have sewer, sewer capacity, which would tend to be in a more populated area where it's also going to be a problem for us because we don't have additional capacity in those buildings. And I think it would also be correct when it's given that, other than multifamily, if you're going somewhere where they don't have sewer and the sewer authority doesn't wish to put it in, all that may do is alter your plans as a developer to increase lot size above what you originally intended for that development. Or you might choose to put in a package plant, uh, because if, if you, if you put in where you don't have sewer and you have to, uh, navigate waste disposal through septic, it requires a larger lot size. Now that would help temper the number of students we would draw out of that development because the fewer, fewer houses, fewer, lesser impact. But that still won't necessarily prevent them from developing there, nor would it cause them not to go somewhere else where it's just as much of a problem or an issue.
Excuse me, but, uh, without exception, we'll add five more minutes to the time.
We're basically reactive. I feel like we're in a reactive posture in that we react to what is happening and we kind of have to take it. We can't really modify or we can't really, or can we? Can we really have meaningful input that would adjust or change things or make a difference?
In some respects, everyone's reactive because you have to deal with what's submitted. So they submit it and then we do have to react. Um, and then we do give our comments and it's up to them to make the ultimate decision. But it also boils down to timing. There's subdivisions out there. They may submit a 400 lot subdivision and it may sit, nothing's done. A year later, someone submits another, so there's also that timing that we deal with. And that's part of why we do those growth studies because everyone may say, oh my goodness, you know, this is going to throw something over capacity, but nothing happens, it just sits wooded. So we've got those issues as well and that can change assignments too, because they may say, well, I was assigned this, I came in, but because we know this developer built ahead of them, we're not going to have to reassign you potentially if you come in a couple of years later. Just a lot of timing factors as well.
It's been a while since we've actually had to reassign neighborhoods to a school. What it tends to do is reduce down the opportunities for choice. And, uh, we, we are to a degree reactive, but we try to be just ahead of growth. We have fewer than 30 gray portables in use throughout the county. Uh, all the recommendations you saw last week in long range facility plan to move projects up for expansion, all those expansions, that's our effort to stay just in front of the growth that, that planning and demographics is projecting, based on the developments that have been approved and the rate at which those developments are building out.
And to Dr. Royster's point, that would be the other key that we have to monitor. We don't want to add on based on something someone proposes and it doesn't happen. So it's, it's a fine line. And just to follow up one question, Mr. Sellers had, we have 230 subdivisions we're monitoring right now with five more lots, of course, which?
Ms. Middleton, does that conclude your questions?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sellers has an additional question.
Well, just, uh, gentlemen, thank you very much for putting all this information together and for, uh, doing what you can to improve the relationship in your respective departments. It's good information to have and Madam Chairman, uh, we'll, we'll take this back to the advocacy committee for a conversation related to next steps and with the administration, we'll work out a game plan and bring it back to the board at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. And without exception, we'll add an additional five minutes and this is Cheryl Goodwin-Cowell.
Thank you. I've, I've, I've been asking about impact fees for years, but I have an idea and I know the developers are not going to like it, but whenever they, whenever they plan a 400 to 500 housing development, won't they build us a school right in the middle of it? Sit the school right there in the middle of it and then when they finish it, turn it over to the, the school district. I mean, because they are building all of these big developments, why don't they help us out? That's my idea. What you think, who, 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 who do we go to, to, to make sure that something like this can happen? Because I mean, we have a whole lot of development going on. Anybody want to answer that?
You don't have enough time for me to answer that.
I, I was just going to say in response, this, the structure really as contemplated by law right now would be impact fees, would be the, that would be the mechanism for school districts to work with local county councils to best determine the cost and then, then provide financial, um, arrangement to help offset that, that construction.
Could I, could I give an example of one of the things that could happen that if I, this is in my, let me put my workout on. I've got a client who has a piece of property to build a thousand houses. The developer offered to give the school system a piece of ground for the school, but they want the school system to pay part of the $5 million to run the sewer line and the water line out to the property. So you don't get what, you don't get it for free.
There, there are a number of examples, not very many, but a few in the state where developers, not where, one where they've built a school, but where they have provided property for that purpose. Now, you know, developers in business to make money, obviously. Well, one of the things that happens if you build a school in proximity to a development, and you can see that throughout our county, you had growth before, as soon as we build the school. Rudolph Gordon is a prime example. Some of you may remember Rudolph Gordon and what was around Rudolph Gordon before we built it? And what's there now? Us constructing the school and occupying it accelerates the development in these areas. So if you, if you got the property and physically put it inside a developer's property, the one thing it's going to do for that developer is going to more quickly sell their homes because that's very attractive to people to move into that community. There's a neighborhood school li- literally in their neighborhood. Uh, we've seen that effect in, throughout the county, that's, that's really part of the effect and that's one of the reasons we're recommending pulling up Fountain Inn High School, for example. Uh, the growth down there has become greatly accelerated since we constructed that school. And that, you can go anywhere in the district where we built a school and generally see, when it's a new school, that shortly thereafter, you had accelerated growth of school age population in that community, more so than you saw before the school was constructed.
A lot like that would be a benefit to them.
Oh, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Certainly.
Benefit us too.
Which there, again, I think you'll find examples, as Mr. Sellers cited one, and there are a few others in the state where they provided a piece of property. I'm not aware of anywhere they built, actually built on it.
Does the, the county council take the recommendation from the SAC?
Uh, just in subdivisions, county council actually doesn't have a vote, it stops with the planning commission.
So the SAC reports to the planning commission, then the planning commission reports to the county council?
They, the planning commission has the ultimate say on subdivisions. So they, they don't even proceed to the county council. The only time a county count, the county council gets involved is if it's a rezoning where they need to rezone the property, for instance, to residential prior to a subdivision being installed.
So the planning commission had, they, they have a board, right, that it goes to?
The planning commission.
And they vote on it?
Yes, ma'am. They have final say and determination on subdivisions.
And not be, that's not the model for the municipalities.
Actually in.
At least not all of them.
Most it is, um, for subdivisions, um, for planning commission to have final say for subdivisions. Now, not, obviously in rezonings and land developments and flexible review districts that a lot of these municipalities have created now, the one I mentioned about sod, that's a review district. They know it's going to be a subdivision. County council's limited the maximum number of homes that can be put in, the way the homes will look and to that point, sod.
So do the planning commission, um, send things to the zoning commission when, when you trying to get something rezoned?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. As part of the process, the rezoning process would be from the planning commission to council, for council to have the ultimate say on a rezoning, but not with a subdivision. A rezoning would be if typically it involves some things lower density, um, 1.7 units slots per acre and they want to go higher density. So they want to zone for 3.6 units per acre. Then they have to go through a public hearing, then to the pla- planning commission, then a committee of council and then ultimately county council to approve that, which would in turn lead to a subdivision, what you saw, and then the planning commission would have final say on that subdivision. But if it's already zoned appropriately, if it's already zoned for 2.9 units an acre and the developer says this, this will work, then it would just go to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin-Cowell. Without exception, we're going to add 10 minutes. We have an additional question. Ms. Doolan?
Actually, my question was already answered because I wondered about the developers donating land to the district and if that might sweeten the deal for the county to grant, to grant their request to build a subdivision, but how many subdivisions are there that would have an extra, what, 25 acres to donate?
And the other issue would be, and we've had these discussions with council, I mean, with the county, I should say, and with developers. It also boils down to, is it a site that we need? We've had a site potentially that's maybe next door to a school. We just, it'd be great, but it's not the right location. Now, you know, obviously, uh, the county's aware with our meetings, you know, we're growing in the southern area of the county, so we've made it known, hey, you know, if some large-scale developer were to come along. So we've made it known, hey, you know, if some large scale developer were to come along and has four hundred acres and is looking for something, keep us in mind, you know. So those discussions are also had.
Well, I'm only aware of one neighborhood in Charleston where that did happen and there was a huge lot of land and they did donate to the school system there. But I just pulled it up. The homes are selling in the high six hundreds, so it's not really affordable housing at all. But that's a huge selling point for this neighborhood because it's essentially a private school just for their neighborhood. I mean, that's great if you live in a seven hundred thousand dollar home and you want your child to go to your neighborhood school, but that seems kind of elitist to me. And I can't imagine how many neighborhoods are going to have rebuilding this kind of home and want to just be like, okay, we'd be happy to give away twenty-five of our lots or what might be fifty lots.
There's other areas where Wayne's from in Florida, they have concurrency and they do require that sometimes, whether it be provide the land, you know, if we're going to need this, at least provide the land, concurrency, things like that. So it exists, just not here. You know, when I worked over there, a developer walked in and said, you know, what are your impact fees? We don't have any, you know, they're used to dealing in other areas. It's not abnormal to have impact fees.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you again, guys, for that great presentation and answering our many questions. We appreciate it very much. Hearing no other questions or comments, we're going to move on to our next matter of business. That's item four point oh two nomination of South Carolina School Board Association Region Fifteen Director. I'll give you just a little bit of background information on that. Our current Region Fifteen Director representing us is Glenda Morrison-Fair, who was elected in 2022 to fill the unexpired term of Lisa Wells when she retired to board, board service. That term expires at the end of this year and GCS Board now must nominate a representative to serve in this role for a four-year term extending from December 2023 to December 2027. According to the South Carolina School Board Association, the twenty-member Board of Directors representing different regions of the state serves as the governing body for the association. The board sets policies for the association, approves the annual budget, hires and evaluates the executive director, and handles other responsibilities described by the South Carolina School Board Association Constitution and Policy Manual. The board meets at least four times annually and participates in a yearly retreat. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the South Carolina School Board Association Region Fifteen Director. Do we have nominations? Ms. Michelle Goodwin-Cowell?
I nominate Glenda Morrison-Fair to be able to serve out a full four-year term since she took over Lisa's terms and she got off the board.
Thank you very much. Do we have other nominations from the floor? Anyone?
I'll second.
We have a second for Ms. Glenda Morrison-Fair and there are no other nominations from the floor. So all in favor of Ms. Glenda Morrison-Fair serving as our representative?
Aye.
Is that aye? All opposed? No. Okay, Mrs. Glenda Morrison-Fair's name will be submitted at our next board meeting for final approval. Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is item four point oh three Board Officer Candidate Roster. This item is for information only. Our board policy BBAA outlines the Board of Trustees Officer Election Process as follows. I'll go over that. A board member wishing to be considered for one or more offices for the subsequent year, whether it be Chair, Vice Chair, or Secretary, shall submit a letter of intent by April first. The letter of intent shall include the offices for which individuals wish to be considered. The secretary shall prepare a roster of candidates seeking each office to include their respective letters of intent and present this roster to the full board at the April meeting. You have that in your notes. A board member wishing his or name to be added or deleted from the roster shall notify the secretary in writing within the next seven calendar days. The secretary shall present the final roster to the full board for their consideration at this meeting. And since Mrs. Morrison-Fair is absent today, I will be submitting that information to you. The final officer elections will be held at our regular meeting in June and the vote shall be by show of hands. Again, in Ms. Morrison-Fair's absence, I'd like to present to you the final roster of candidates for Chair Debbie Bush and Carolyn Stiles, for Vice Chair Linda Lavinus Wells and Glenda Morrison-Fair, for Secretary Anne Marie Middleton and Angie Mosley. Any questions or comments regarding this item? Hearing none, this concludes the administration section and I will turn the, the meeting back over to you, Chairman Bush.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stiles. Is the buildings and grounds and Ms. Lavinus Wells is not present today, so I will, I will fulfill those duties. The Long Range Facilities Plan Capital Improvement Program is the first item on our building and grounds. Dr. Royster?
Thank you, Ms. Bush. I know you all will recall, we spent considerable amount of time going over this in great detail last week. So we are bringing to you today really just a summary of that, certainly asking, answering a question that you might have. But we're asking that you approve, one, approve the Long Range Facility Plan Capital Improvement Plan as updated and to also approve the transfer of eighty-five million seventy-seven thousand five hundred sixty dollars from unassigned general fund fund balance to the building fund in order to fund these accelerated projects and a couple of additions that I'll point out to you as well. So first, just as a reminder, these are the budget adjustments. New elementary school, we moved the occupancy from twenty-four to twenty-five, which you all were already aware of. We did that more than a year ago, but it had a slight budget impact to the negative increase in the budget slightly. Then we also recommended additional projects. These are projects that were already there. Ellyn Woodside, Fort Shoals, Mountain View, Simpsonville, and Sioux Cleveland. They're already included as additions to expand capacity. Within a very near future, they were in the Mars budget to replace building wide HVAC, fire alarm, in one case to do LED lighting, and to do generator replacement in all but one. So to accomplish this work at the same time we're doing the additions, we recommend we pull those projects forward, that they might be included in the GC bid for the addition work by moving them forward and doing them as a package that should reduce the actual cost of those projects. You'll also note in this slide, and I'm sure much easier to read from your laptop than up here, but what this does is it shows you by project, the projects that we propose and request you approve be advanced. So Northwest Middle, new building on a new site, advance it to August of twenty-seven, which is a one-year advancement in its completion. Donaldson Career Center, new building on site, move it forward one year, August thirty-one. West Greenville Center, move it forward three years to August thirty. And going down, skipping down to Welcome Elementary School, moving that project forward one year to thirty-one. Crestview, one year to thirty-two. Golden Strip Career Center, two years to thirty-three. J. Harley Bonds, three years to thirty-one. NRE Career Center, two years to thirty-three. Ralph Chandler Edition, three years to August of twenty-nine. Fountain Inn High Edition, forward two years to August of twenty-five. And the new elementary school moving out one year to August of twenty-five. You'll also note an additional add to the Mars, which is our budget that's set aside for doing major systems replacement as forecast by the Mars system, which is simply the software that we use to forecast life expectancy of major building components and systems. And we know that budget has to be adjusted rather frequently to accommodate for increases in cost. And if we have changes, it's not an absolutely one hundred percent accurate predictor that the roof has to be replaced in thirty thirty, in twenty thirty-two. It might have to happen in twenty thirty-one. It might go to twenty thirty-four. If the roof will last a little bit longer, it might cost us a little bit more to replace it. If we have to do it sooner, it may run up on top of another project. So that requires some constant adjustment. Also adding technology refresh, additional funding there because now we go all the way down to the lowest grades with a, with a device, a one-to-one device. Security enhancement, we are continually adding to the security systems that we have, increasing technology-based security systems that adds annually to that. And the last add is a four million dollar, each of those three are annual adds. The last add is four million dollars for the LED lighting project. That is to continue the replacement of regular lighting systems in all of our schools with LED systems, which are far more efficient, they're less expensive to operate, and they provide greater degree of control to the occupants of the building to adjust the lighting level to meet their needs. As a, as a reminder, we started on that project a number of years ago using qualified zone academy bonds. And at the time we began this project, Duke Energy had a rebate system in place that helped us to fund some of the replacement. Qualified, qualified zone academy bonds are no longer a funding source available to us. Duke Energy ended the rebate program, so now any, any LED lighting would be on us to replace, but there are short and long-term benefits to that replacement. I believe that figure would get us about a third to a fourth of the way there on the rest of the systems. I think the total on that's around twelve to fourteen million dollars. And obviously, as we move forward, that sometimes those prices increase with technology, sometimes you see a price decrease. But that would let us do another segment of our schools. Important to note, this proposed recommendation does not include a tax increase. It accelerates the occupancy dates for eleven school projects and resumes the LED lighting project. We also are recommending transfer of eighty-five million seventy-seven thousand five hundred sixty dollars from unassigned general fund fund balance to the building fund in order to fund the CIP as presented. And as you know, and we have said repeatedly in the past, we like to seek opportunities to utilize the fund balance, which is, is added to based on one-time dollars that we realize in savings or in revenue in excess of expense that may not occur in the future. So it's most fiscally sound, practical, and conservative to utilize that on one-time expenditures. And this will significantly decrease our fund balance, but will still place it at a level above the board policy and at an amount that allows us to meet all of our cash flow needs, which are generally greater in the first half of any fiscal year than they are in the second half. Be glad to answer any questions that you all have, whether related directly to the things I've said this morning or any item within that Long Range Facility Plan that you may have had a question for about. I don't think we had any questions submitted in writing following the, the workshop last week, but certainly any questions you all might have. Dr. Stiles? Ms. Bush, I'm sorry.
What's the current unassigned fund balance balance?
The, the most recent presented to the board unassigned fund balance was three hundred forty-one million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. And we're currently, that was as of January of twenty twenty-three. And we're currently working on the February presentation, February twenty twenty-three presentation at your next board meeting.
Is it three hundred forty-one million?
Yes, ma'am. Three hundred forty-one million.
As a reminder, a large amount of that would be tax revenue that we received in December, January, and February, which is the predominance of the local tax revenue for the entire year, but would only reflect seven months' expense out of it.
Correct.
Okay, so why don't we take out the eighty-five, yeah, eighty-five million? That still leaves a really healthy unassigned fund balance, correct?
You remove the expense projected until the end of the year, it leaves, Robin, around one twenty-two? That sound right?
Yes, sir. That's a projection as of now. It, it should.
It leaves just about, but not quite, double the amount you require, which is what we need for cash flow in the first six months of the year.
Correct.
Now, what will happen without question, June, June the thirtieth, when we close our books and the auditors come in, they will identify a new amount to add to fund balance. We already know that, we just can't say with certainty what that amount will be, that we will come back to you next year and say, we believe you need to take this additional amount now and apply it to these non-recurring expenditures. But right now, based on our current expenditures and wanting to make sure we don't have to borrow in lieu, in order to meet payroll demands for the first half of next year, this is the amount that we're comfortable with recommending.
Thank you.
Doolan, Dr. Stiles?
Dr. Royster, I'd just like to say then I'm very pleased that you brought this forward and I'm very excited about these schools that are in need of a, a new facility or renovation to their facility. These projects are being moved up, in particular Northwest Middle. I'm very excited about that for the students and the staff there. And I just, I feel like it's a wise decision because otherwise the money's just sitting there. It's not really making a difference for our students. And I believe that moving forward with utilizing this fund balance, this eighty-five million dollars will make a significant difference for many of our students. I don't know how many students that we're talking about, but I know that's a tremendous number of students. So thank you for bringing that forward and I am extremely excited about it.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, this, there's two recommended motions. I won't entertain the.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Sailors?
I'll move to approve the April twenty twenty-three Long Range Facilities Plan and Capital Improvement Program as presented and outlined in the LRFP CIP document.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like some? Motion carries.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Sailors?
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the transfer of eighty-five million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars of unassigned general fund balance, balance to building fund in order to fund the capital improvement program as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the Architect Selection for Woodland Elementary School Edition Project.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. You have in your packet the recommendation of the selection review committee, which in accord with our policy and procurement code, reviews submissions for A and E selection. They are ranked in order of the ranking of that committee. One, one additional note here, as you know, it's always been the districts, or in recent history, at least seventeen years, it's been the district's practice, to go back to the architect of record when doing an addition to a building. to go back to the architect of record when doing an addition to a building that works much more smoothly, generally more cost-effective to do so. But in this case, in this particular addition at Woodland, that company is no longer in existence, nor is there a successor company. Sometimes we'll find one company was bought out or taken over by another company. That's the reason we're bringing you this as a recommendation for selection of a new A&amp;E firm for that, for that addition. Colonel Carlin, do you have anything you need to add to that?
No, sir.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Saylor?
I make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to approve the architectural firm with which, with which successful fee negotiations are achieved for the proposed new addition to Woodland Elementary School.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we announce those, or is that just in the minutes?
I think at this point, because negotiation would ensue that we don't, I don't think we've normally-
All right, all right, until it's final.
And, and you will have a second run at that, at the committee, at the board meeting.
Right, the next item on our agenda is the lease agreement renewal at Hollis Academy between the school district of Greenville County and the YMCA of Greenville.
Colonel Carlin?
Sir, thank you. This is a renewal lease for the YMCA. Back in the late 90s, the, the district set aside about an acre and a half piece of land that the YMCA could construct a, about a 4,500 square foot facility and associated parking lot. That lease is going to be running out in May. And we're asking that, that, well, to begin, the YMCA has requested that we initiate a new lease, and we're recommending the same.
One note, it is longer than those leases we normally extend, but they have a building on the property.
That's right. The old, the original, I should say, lease, lease agreement, when that building was completed on the property. It's part of that process, the original lease agreement was for 25 years. And then it had a clause in there that the YMCA could, could renew that for another additional 25 years. Now, there, there's a, a provision here, which is standard in, in all of our agreements, that both parties can terminate this agreement early. So that, that is still a possibility. Within 90 days, the, the school district, for example, could terminate this agreement. But the school district would still be responsible for paying the YMCA fair market value for the structure, the building itself on that, on that property. And that's within this agreement.
Madam Chairman?
Very vocal this one.
I got a visit interest in this one because my leadership Greenville classes put the playground there. I move to approve the lease agreement between the school district and the YMCA of Greenville for approximately 1.5 acres of property on Hollis Academy campus.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The last item on our agenda is the Facilities Project Report.
Colonel, did you have any item or particular note in that report?
No, sir, nothing in addition.
So I wonder if there are any questions that you all might have.
Does anyone have any facilities project questions this morning? Wow. Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Thank you, Dr. Royster.
Ms. Bush?
Madam Chairman? I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion and unanimous seconds from the board. So all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries, and we stand adjourned. There, let me remind you, there is, yeah, lunch is here. There is a audit committee-